I'd like to call and order the December 18th, 2023 County Commission meeting and welcome all of our guests that are here tonight and invite you to come back at any opportunity that you can be with us. At this time, I introduce Commissioner Evans for our prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Thurman Moens to join me up here. And while he's making his way up, I'd like to introduce y'all to him. I think most of y'all know him, but Mr. Thurman is one of our decorated veterans. He served Vietnam as a corpsman with the 100, with the first recon battalion, first Marine Division. He was a Tennessee State Park Ranger for 30 years where he managed Long Hunter State Park and the bicentennial mall. He's been foreman of Charlie Daniels' Twin Pines Ranch for 40 years. He's a former bull rider and rodeo cowboy. He's quite a historian, train enthusiast, and I'm honored to be able to call him my friend.
Thank you very much, there, Haskell. I tell you, and I tell you about my commissioner. He told me anytime them cars run through my fence out there to call him and he'd come. And you will. They were not. If you would, let's bow our heads for a prayer.
Please rise.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before you asking you to bless this group, and we know they have many trials, tribulations, hard decisions to make for the betterment of Wilson County. We pray that common sense prevails, and we ask that you guide, guard, and direct us all throughout this service and throughout the meeting here tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you would, face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Haskell. I tell you how old I am, as in when I first came here to Wilson County in 72, I worked as a Ranger at Sators, Lebanon, and I worked with Sheriff Bryant. I sure did. His dad and his granddad, Pat. I'm older than dirt, and I can tell you some stuff on Crete here, you know? I won't go into all of that. And Goodall, we won't even get into that room. We were at MTSU together, and it was real funny. The teacher always would start the class with, "Mr. Goodall, are you going to pay attention?" And so the door was open, and all these pretty little college girls were walking by, and he was saying it all the time. And then Jerry, well, we're not going to get into that. It was an honor to have Ben Ask to be here tonight, and I appreciate you, Haskell.
Thank you. He also spent a few days with Charlie Daniels, I believe, as well. And if you will, record your presence at tonight's meeting by pressing yes on your panel. Mr. Bernard is not with us tonight. He said if y'all wanted to see him, to come on out and see Christmas lights tonight, and he let you in free, I think is what he said. I think he said, I think, I think he said that, but I ain't.
Did he say free?
I thought that's what he said, but I may be mistaken.
What did he say, Joe?
Did you get it in right, Mr.?
I didn't get it in right, no. Yeah, that ain't gonna work, is it? Twenty-four present, one absent. My screen A is not working, if that matters, the screen here. I mean, it does matter, but if you can help me out. This time, anyone wishing to speak before the Wilson County Commission is, can step forward to the back and state your name and address for the record. It has to be something on the agenda. Anyone here for public comment this morning? Seeing none, we'll close public comment period, and we'll move on to the report of the steering committee. Commissioner Fields?
The steering committee of the County Commission of Wilson County, Tennessee, met in regular session on Thursday, December the 7th, 2023, in the upstairs conference room at the Wilson County Courthouse. A copy of those minutes are in your packet. I move that it be received and filed.
I got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Say aye.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And adoption of the agenda. Commissioner Fields?
Each person should have a copy of the agenda. I move that it be accepted and.
Say aye.
Got a motion, second, but Commissioner Gentry?
Yes, I'd make a motion. We amend the agenda. We inadvertently left off one of the appointments of a judicial commissioner via one-year part-time, and I'd like to add that on.
So do I hear a motion to amend the agenda? I got a motion or a second? All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda? I don't see any.
Mr. Mayor, there is no consent agenda.
Good deal. At this time, we will, for special recognition, invite Mr. Commissioner Gentry to come forward, please.
Okay. First of all, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. I'm going to ask Mr. Pat Tuttle to come forward, and if your wife's available. I know you have a lot of family. I'm sure they don't all want a trucks up here, but you can come by yourself, or you can bring anybody with you. Okay? And Ms. Lisa, would you come forward too? Good to see you.
It's my grandson, Ty.
How you doing, Ty? Nice to meet you. Just stand right here. Okay, we have a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring James Pat Tuttle for his many years of service to Wilson County. Whereas Pat Tuttle has devoted many years of service to his country and to Wilson County, and whereas Mr. Tuttle served in the U.S. Army until 1973, or during his time in service, he was deployed to Vietnam and served as an infantry platoon leader. And Mr. Tuttle was a member of the Army Reserves until 1984, when he then transferred to the Air National Guard. He finally made sense. I was in the Air Force, okay? And Mr. Tuttle received a Bronze Star for his service in Vietnam, and many Army and Air Force Achievement Medals, and a Meritorious Service Medal, along with many other awards. And as, and whereas Mr. Tuttle obtained a bachelor degree of criminal justice in December of 1979, and a master's of public administration in 1988. And whereas Mr. Tuttle served as a patrol officer with the Metro Police Department from 1974 to 1985. And while in the service, he became commander of 118th Security Police Flight, where he was responsible for training in the readiness of Air National Guard Police Flight for worldwide deployment, where he supervised 18 state Tennessee Military Police Guards in a 50-man National Guard Unit from June 1985 to June 1988. And Mr. Tuttle was commander of the 118th Communication Flight from June 1988 to June 1999. Whereas from the July 1999 to July 2004, he supervised a full-service HR office for all full-time Army and National Guard employees at the Tennessee National Guard Headquarters in Nashville. And whereas in July 2003, Mr. Tuttle became Director of Military Support at the National Guard Headquarters in Nashville, where he was responsible for the physical security and anti-terrorism program for all Tennessee Army National Guard facilities and personnel across the state. Retired in July 2006, Mr. Tuttle served a total of 32 years in the United States Army and the Air National Guard. And after his many years of selfless service to his country, Mr. Tuttle in February 2008 accepted a position as a Wilson County Judicial Commissioner, being highly recommended as an honest, respectful man. And whereas in his 16 years of service to Wilson County, continued to achieve excellent reviews on each yearly performance evaluation in the areas of initiative, problem-solving, decision-making, and interpersonal skills, professionalism, attendance, punctuality, and work quality. And whereas outside of his outstanding career, Mr. Tuttle is blessed with four children, 10 grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren who fill his life with joy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County that we honor and express our appreciation to Mr. Pat Tuttle for his many years of selfless service and commitment to our country and Wilson County.
Who's approved?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I want to introduce Ms. Lisa Goldaroni to present him the resolution.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Tuttle, we present you tonight with this framed resolution from the Board of County Commissioners, which is very highly deserved. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please be seated, everyone.
Lisa's got a couple to say.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone this evening. Thank you for this opportunity to have a special recognition for Mr. Pat Tuttle. As the resolution indicated, he is certainly deserving. I'd also like to thank his family and friends for being here tonight and support in this honorable occasion. I would just like to make a few brief comments about working with Mr. Tuttle. First, he's our resident gun expert, gun laws and guns. If you have a question, he's got the answer. He's very liked and well-respected within our office and among the law enforcement community. And there's a, there's a few things that are guaranteed when you work with Mr. Tuttle in my office. First, he's going to ask you about some random subject in history, or geography, or something that you won't have any clue about, and then he's going to school you on that topic. He's extremely well-read and truly one of the most intelligent men I've ever met. He's also going to share some fantastic stories with you about Vietnam, being a Metro Police Officer, or a family member that he's particularly proud of that particular day. Mr. Tuttle loves his family, and he's very proud of his children, his grandchildren, and his great-grandchildren. Also, you're going to get a good lunch or dinner when you work with Mr. Tuttle. He'll make sure of it. And last, but certainly not least, someone in the office is going to be on the receiving end of one of his pranks. He's going to come flying out of a corner somewhere, he's going to scare you to death, or he's going to be telling you a joke that'll have you bend over. Working with Mr. Tuttle is certainly entertaining, and it has been an honor and a privilege to have him on my team. In closing, two things I can count on when I talk to Mr. Tuttle. Mr. Tuttle, how you doing today? Well, not bad for an old guy. The second, when I ask if he needs anything? Grocery sack full of $100 bills, ma'am. So, Mr. Tuttle, tonight, on behalf of the Judicial Commissioners Office, in addition to your special recognition, we are granting your ongoing request. Here's your grocery sack, sir, full of $100 bills. Now, this is funny money, so please, nobody try to rob him on the way out of here. Thank you.
And Mr. Or Jerry McFarland, would you like to make a comment?
I can't make a comment. I worked with him two years. There's no way I can make a comment here, that. He needs to speak.
I know, he will. Okay.
Let me hold that for you. Thanks, sir. First of all, I'd like to thank this commission and the previous commissions that had the conference, and the first ones that took a terrible chance to appoint me and keep the point of me and keep me in the job. I'm really grateful for that. After listening to what Commissioner Gentry said, I came to, up here just a minute ago, just a very startling recognition that I never could hold a steady job. But working for the Mr.'s office, it's been a very enjoyable job. I've worked with some superlative people, both commissioners and law enforcement. Did my best to help our citizens along as we go. And everybody's heard the old saying that time heals all wounds. Well, it's a balanced equation because time wounds all heels. And I'm living proof of it. The gentleman that gave our invocation tonight, talking about coming here in 1972, this was the new courthouse. When I was a kid, the courthouse was down on the square. The old courthouse. So I've been around quite some time. But the mention of my family, and ordinarily proud of every family member I have, and I love them dearly. And for the folks that haven't reached retirement age, or time to retire, when you leave, whatever your job is, you go back to your family. That's what's important. That's where you're wound, wind up. Keep them and cultivate them, and hold them close and love them. But thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the great honor you've given me tonight. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Going to Vanguard, then, um, well, going to Vanguard, the pay was the same. Yeah, the standard, it was.
They got sheets, they got sheets. Thank you, man. Thank you, Mr. Gentry and Tuttle family for all being here tonight. Do not have any public hearing for rezoning tonight, to my knowledge, Tom. Our report for the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Fields?
The Minutes Committee of the County Commission of Wilson County, Tennessee, met in regular session on Thursday, December the 7th, 2023, in the upstairs conference room at the Wilson County Courthouse. Copy of those minutes are in your packet. I move it be accepted and filed.
Say aye.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reading of the minutes?
Most of this has been read.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, just want to go over a couple of things. One, congratulations to Deputy Chief Tyler Chandler. Congratulations. And also to Coach Costley for, I understand, and the Mount Juliet Parade won the number-one float award. So with Mount Juliet Girls Softballs, congratulations to that as well.
Thank you, sir.
Just to remind you tonight that we are making an appointment to the Parks and Rec Board, Ms. Phyllis Hunter. Will take that position there. It's nothing that you approve, just an advisory board that we have. Also, to let you know that in your packet, there was some information there about TCA Code 8-17-104. Counties are to read into the minutes, required to notify that the State Ethics Commission, which I had to do that, that the primary person for responsible for administering and enforcing the county ethics policy or standards would be our office and the mayor's office. So if you have a complaint, an ethics complaint, it comes in, and what we do normally with this is we'll take that complaint. They just had, what I had to do tonight was read into the fact that you know where to go with it. But we take it in, we ask the chairman of the Ethics Committee, the attorney, and myself, and we look at the complaint and have three answers there. One, it needs to be forwarded on to the Ethics Committee, or it has criminal nature, it needs to go to the DA, or it lacks enough evidence for us to do anything, and we send it back to the person that gave the complaint for more information to bring it back to us. So it's never not done anything with. It has to do one of those three things. But that is the process that we have, and I did what I was asked to do as far as the Ethics Commission. This time, I'd like to introduce Vanderbilt Wilson's Hospital's Director, Dr. Scott McCarver, to come and make a presentation up front to you here. I hope we all know, or thankful for the hospital that we have in Wilson County. Not every county has a hospital, and we have one that's been recognized across the United States, and definitely is something that is worth notifying. And really, when me and Commissioner McFarland, we sat on the board there and asked him to come and just kind of update the commission about what was going to the hospital, we didn't know this award was coming down. So it came down in between, I think, the time we scheduled this. So, Mr. McCarver, glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here, and I'd like to start off by just saying thank you all, to all of the commissioners for your service to our community. We really appreciate you. I do have some exciting updates about our hospital here in Wilson County. So as you may recall, Vanderbilt acquired the hospital in August of 2019, so it's hard to believe, but we've just had our four-year anniversary of owning the hospital. A little bit of information about our hospital, we are the only full-service hospital here in Wilson County. We have 245 beds. You can see a little bit more information, but I'm going to, I'm going to go quickly because I've got some folks to recognize here. You can see since acquisition, on the left-hand side of the slide there, our volumes at the hospital have grown significantly. And along with that volume growth, our employees have grown significantly as well, so bringing more jobs to Wilson County. And since acquisition, we have made significant investments in the hospital to make sure that we're bringing more and more services to the people of Wilson County. First, we installed Epic, which is our electronic medical record. It allows patients to get seamless care across thousands of hospitals in the country. It's a significant capital investment to, to have Epic. Other capital investments that we have made since acquisition, one of the very first things that we did was bring the Vanderbilt Ingram Cancer Center here to Wilson County. And as a part of that, we installed the Ethos Linear Accelerator. At that time, we were only the fourth hospital in the country to have the Ethos Linear Accelerator. And this has revolutionized the way that cancer patients are getting treatment in radiation. This Ethos scanner is now the standard across the country. Many, many hospitals either have already installed it, or are in the process of installing it, but we were one of the first. Really proud of that. And we've continued to upgrade our services to provide the very best care for all of our We are well-represented across the county of, now across Wilson County. Now, you should have something on your desk that has this in more detail, because I know you can't read that on the slide up there, but you should have that that sort of shows you all the different locations where we are here in Wilson County. Some of our major accomplishments are that we have expanded our ICU by opening a step-down unit. Just last year, we became a Level III Trauma Center, again, providing services for our patients here that are much needed. We restarted interventional cardiology, so this is the treatment for patients who are having heart attacks. And then we have a very unique unit. It's called the Epilepsy Monitoring Unit. And this is where folks who are having seizures and they haven't been able to diagnose what's causing that, they can come in, they're admitted for a full week, and we hook them up to all this stuff. But we monitor them 24 hours a day, and about 90% of them leave the hospital then understanding what's causing those seizures. And that's life-changing for these patients. There's a long waiting list of patients that are trying to get in for that service. And it's not on the slide because it was just announced today that we now have a new collaboration with the Mount Juliet Fire Department, and we'll be providing medical direction for their EMS service. So that's a really exciting new advancement. The big reason that I wanted to come today is to talk about patient safety and clinical quality. So there's an organization in this country called Leapfrog Group, and they grade hospitals based on their safety and quality. And just like the grades we got in school, they give hospitals an A through an F. And just like in school, you want the A, you do not want the F. All right? And so we started working with Leapfrog right after acquisition, so four years ago. And I'm going to tell you, those first grades were not pretty. We got Ds in our first grades. But that gave us a roadmap, because Leapfrog gives you all of the areas where you're missing the grade. And our entire team has been focused on making that grade. And I'm really proud to say that this fall, for the first time, Vanderbilt Wilson County Hospital is now a grade A. So in addition to that, Leapfrog was very impressed with all the work that we have been doing. And they have an additional recognition that they have for hospitals that go above and beyond for patient safety and clinical quality. And it's called the Top General Hospital Award. And I am pleased to say that Vanderbilt Wilson County Hospital is named the Top General Hospital for 2023. Now, we're not the only one. There are 34 hospitals in the country that were named Top General Hospital. But I will say that we're among elite company with that. So really, really proud of the work that our team has done. I've got one more slide, and then I want to recognize some of our staff members who are here with me tonight. So the last slide before I recognize these fine individuals is just letting you know that we continue to focus on expanding our services to offer more to our patients here in Wilson County. And so you can see here some of the services that we're continuing to focus on: medical oncology, surgical oncology, urology, growing our trauma service, interventional cardiology, bariatric surgery. And we're always working on opening additional inpatient beds because we're getting fuller and fuller and fuller. All right. So with that, I would like to introduce you. I would say, I really wanted to bring all 800 employees up here for you to see how amazing that they are, but instead, I brought six of our very, very best employees, and I'd like to introduce them to you. And if you guys wouldn't mind, when I introduce you, if you could come up so we can get a quick picture, that'd be fantastic. So Debbie Jennings is one of our outstanding inpatient nurses. She works on our One North Unit. So if you've ever been up there with a family member, you've probably seen Debbie. Hunter Clark, Hunter is one of our transporters. So if you're ever in the hospital and you have to go from your inpatient room down to radiology to get a study, he's probably the man driving the wheelchair. And then Michelle Elmore, Michelle is a nurse. She's in our case management department. So if you've ever had a family member go to the hospital, and then they're getting ready for their discharge, Michelle is the one that makes sure that they have everything that they need when they get home so that everything is safe. Leanne Allen is one of our registration clerks, and if you ever come in just for an outpatient x-ray, you've probably talked to Leanne because she's there at the desk, she's greeting everyone as they come in with that big smile. Kylie Pittman, Kylie's one of our physical therapists. So if you come in, you have a procedure, and then you just need some help sort of getting going again after that procedure before you go home, Kylie's the one that's going to help you with that. And then Kendall Burke, Kendall is one of our radiation therapists. So when our patients come in for radiation treatment for cancer, she's the one that makes sure that all the equipment's set up right, and that patient's going to get exactly the radiation treatment that they need. So please join me in just thanking these folks for the amazing work that they have done at our hospital to get us from a D to an A.
All right. Thank you.
I know you got some other folks in the back. Like, I know Tracy's back there that always keeps us informed, and you may have some others to recognize.
So we had lots of folks from the hospital, and we had family members from our folks who joined us today because they're really excited about these folks being recognized. If you're here to support these folks, if you wouldn't mind just standing up. So we had lots of folks from the hospital, and we had family members from our folks who joined us today, because they're really excited about these folks being recognized. If you're here to support these folks, if you wouldn't mind just standing up.[600.01][600.01][applause]
Thank you again. Thank all of you for what you do.
Thank you, y'all.
Good to see you. It is an honor to have you with us tonight, and to have Vanderbilt-Wilson Hospital in Wilson County. That's a big deal. Elections and appointments, Mr. Goodall, anybody to add to the list?
We're good.
Your motion to approve a notary list?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ag extension, you are to elect four members to serve a two-year term on the Ag Extension Committee. Upon your recommendation of the Ag Extension Director, Lucas Holman, would like to recommend Commissioner Tommy Jones, Commissioner Haskell Evans, along with Ms. Christina Key, and Mr. Jeffrey Turner.
To approve.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planning Commission, two members here. You are to confirm my appointment, if you'd like to, to serve a four-year term for the Wilson County Planning Commission. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to appoint Mr. Gary Renfro in place of Mr. Johnny Ricketts, whose term was up, and he decided it was time for him to retire, and served us well, by the way, as well as Mr. Gene Jones, which is the chair of that committee.
To move.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from Emergency Management Committee, I'm sorry, my bad. We have Commissioner John Gentry.
Yeah, Ms. Lisa will come up and introduce the new commissioner.
Okay. Stuck the error on my cheat sheet, forgot to write what it was for. Doesn't help.
Thank you.
I just need to follow through. Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Ms. Crystal Warman at the back podium. Crystal Warman has come to the Judicial Commissioner's Office, and she has been working as a civilian county employee in a training program to be a judicial commissioner for the last two months. She has done excellent in the training program. She's a very quick study, great with the computer. And at this time, I would like to ask for your vote for Ms. Warman to be a part-time judicial commissioner to serve a term of one year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record reflected was unanimous.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Now, we'll move on to the report from Emergency Management Committee. Commissioner Smith?
No report.
Emergency Management Director's report, Mr. Brian Newberry. We have emptied out the chambers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, just a quick report. The packet you have shows the call volume status through November. And just kind of an overall agency status report, we just got a couple, I think it was four or five. Through the orientation process, they'll be on the road here hopefully by the end of this month, and then we'll do another hiring round in January, February timeframe as well. Quick update on three and 10, Station 3 and 10. Currently, the Friday of this week is tentatively set, if everything falls into place, for a final walkthrough. Of course, there'll probably be, you know, some little things here and there that may delay that actual occupancy of 10. We're obviously in Station 3 right now, but they still have a punch list to get a couple of things done. I think the majority of that's done. So hopefully by the end of this year, first of next year, depending on staffing and obviously the holidays, that Station 10 will be opening some doors up. So I know Ms. Diane's over there jumping up and down about that, huh? But that's all I have for the report, unless you have any questions. And wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Very good.
Whiskers.
I got a motion to the second. Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director. Report from the Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
Law Enforcement Committee met on December the 4th at 5:30 in the upstairs conference room. The minutes are in your pocket. I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. The report's in your packet. The numbers are pretty much on par. Civil warrants continue to go up. They always do in November and December, because a lot of it's filed, because a lot of people's getting bonuses and everything else. So that number's up. The number of people entering and exiting the court facility is up about 1,000 from last month, and it's staying busy. School is out Tuesday, I believe it is tomorrow, is the last day until Christmas break. I just, I'm saying that because of the fact that on Thursday, the sheriff's office and multiple other agencies, WEMA, Highway Patrol, Lebanon, Mount吉it, school system, the highway code, just several agencies will be doing a mock drill at Green Hill's High School. So if you see a lot of emergency personnel and news cameras and everything there, that's what it is, it's, there's no kids in the school. So, but we schedule these trainings when school is out, so just keep our training up, just keep on, make sure we're ready to protect our kids. So in saying that, congratulations, Commissioner Chandler. I look forward to our continued relationship, working together, and congratulations. That could close my report, unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff. Report from the Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met December the 7th. Minutes are in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director of Schools' report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
Good evening. You do have my report in front of you. Just some, some things I want to mention. Included is our regular December 4th board meeting. You have the agenda, and all that is included. Some highlights of that meeting with two things. The Board of Education voted unanimously to join other public school districts nationwide in a public nuisance lawsuit. And this is against social media companies, Meta. There was an attorney that come to our work session and was able to answer some questions. And there's 25 Tennessee school districts at this time that have signed on to this lawsuit. And during that work session, he did share information, took questions from the board, and then in our meeting, they voted unanimously to join that lawsuit. It's one of those lawsuits, I think, probably could take years to settle. But just in jest, one of the things that we know, a lot of what we deal with in our schools is dealing with things through social media, especially the threats. I would say probably 90% of them that we deal with, there's a thread back to social media. And that's what this lawsuit is about. We will see it as a nationwide lawsuit. But you will hear about that, and I wanted to give you that information. Also, we, the board also had a presentation about our Hallway Hero Project, if you're familiar with that. And what that is, it's a, it's a group, it's a nationwide group that has local bodies of volunteers that are parents and community volunteers. And basically, they engage as volunteers to serve our students in our schools in the hallways. You may see them outside, patrolling. But it's a way that we allow people in our building to help what we're trying to do every day in keeping our kids safe. We have two schools, West Elementary and LZ Patton, the two elementary schools that are currently engaged in that program, and I expect you'll see more, but their representatives were there and gave more information. We have another school, Stoner Creek, who has, theirs is just called Bobcat. It's hitting me, but it's the Bobcats. And where this came from was during that time, there was a lot of concern, if you remember, when we had the portables. So they actually patrolled outside and made that transition. And that's just our local parents that we bring in. Principal organized them. They help have connection to our office, the radio. And that program was just great. So that's three of our schools, and I think you're gonna see this trend continue on. So we're excited about that. I do want to mention, it's not in your notes, but we just finished, you know, tomorrow will be the last day until, I think, January the 3rd, our teachers come back, and then the 4th for students. In the last, well, since Thanksgiving break, our high schools have engaged over 5,000 tests, but with the subtests, over 13,000 tests were given in the last three weeks, three and a half weeks. And I just want to give a shout out to our teachers, administrators, our students, and our parents, because attendance is important, and it's quite a, some of you are involved in the school system. To watch that be pulled off, it's a pretty amazing feat. And we do that twice a year in our high schools, and then once a year in our elementary. So just thankful for that, for our academic team for making sure that went off as success. December the 21st, there will be a public announcement on letter grades, A through F. There was a law passed in 2016 that they had to give schools individual grades due to COVID and some things, and problems with state testing, and that kept being pushed back. That process has been implemented and succeeded, and we have those letter grades. We have them. They're embargoed. And unfortunately, we'll be out of school on the 21st, but you'll hear that information, and I can't say no more than that. But each one of our schools is gonna get a letter grade for the first time. What's, what's that include? There's different weights. Achievement is where it's being weighted the most, gross included, college career readies, our 20, bottom 25% performers, and various subgroups. So as you see that, and I look forward to next month being able to give you more explanation of what it means, but be looking for that this week, as we continue to have things to be proud of with our schools. And I think we'll be able to see that and celebrate. Do have the enrollment numbers still up, 20,549 students. PK through 12 has slowed a little bit. I've noticed the last couple of months. We'll watch that as we go into the spring and see what happens with that. Also, our Family Resource Center, I know we talked quite a bit about them, just what they did over Thanksgiving. 27 specific families were served through, delivered meals through our Family Resource Center. We had 50 families that were served with our partnership through Maple Hill Church of Christ. Tracy Lawrence, Mission Possible, you know, you're familiar with that. We helped with 50 of those turkeys that were donated by him that allowed us to do this. And then our faculty, staff, and board members delivered those meals, and it's always a good thing. And there's continuous activities. We don't talk a lot about it, but even this time of year, Christmas, where our families will be served thanks to Family Resource Center. Ms. Annie Berger and her team and what they do, they do great work. Construction project updates. If you're seeing Wes Wilson, we've got a meeting there again this Wednesday. It's, coordination is going on, a final cleaning, furniture delivery, install, all those things. We've already began the process for fire marshal, looking at occupancy. We'll have more information next month. Hopefully, we'll have a date that we can go with, but that project is coming along nicely. Mount Jupiter School renovations are continuing, your tennis court projects, you know, where we used our money out of our designated fund balance that we set aside. Green Hill final inspection is scheduled. That has been done. It's complete, and we took care of that problem there. And Mount Jupiter and Watertown, they're currently working on those courts, getting those ready for spring. Also, innovative school grants. We've opened some bids. We're looking at some bids and evaluating some bids. But what's gonna be included at us through that state grant for CTE programs, we're looking at the Green Hill Culinary Lab, CTE Shop Canopy at Lebanon High, a Mount Juliet Culinary Program, and greenhouses for the middle school. We wanted to get those in place this spring and summer. All that is dependent upon bids. It's a very tough market right now, I'll just tell you. As bids come in, it seems like they're going up daily on cost, but we're excited about that. That will add to our career and technical program. And like I said, teachers will return January the 3rd, and students, January the 4th. I wish you and your family a blessed Christmas, and that is my report.
Motion to the second. Any discussion? Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, Commissioner. How is the flight program going? I know at the Lebanon Airport, I saw some of the classes over there.
Yeah, we've been over there, and we've just opened some bids. We're evaluating bids on simulators that will take it completely to the next level, and hopefully to get those purchased and installed here in the spring semester.
Thank you. Any other questions? Press for that.
What are we in comparison to other camps as far as number wise?
In enrollment. Last time I looked, we're the ninth largest, ninth or 10th in the state. And just really, really no comparison. You know, you've got your really big districts, Metro, Brother County's hit 50,000, I think, Sumner County's 30,000 plus, and then it's...
So Sumner's 30,000?
Yeah, they may be pushing 40. I'd have to look at that. But we're not there with them. But then, when you go take statewide, we're in the top 10 in population.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Luttrell. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
Mr. Chairman, the Public Works Committee met Monday, December the 4th here at the courthouse at 5:55. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
Ag Center Management Committee met November the 8th, 4:30. Minutes are in your packet. Please receive and file.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Animal Control, Commissioner Reeves.
Animal Control met this evening at 6:30 PM in the conference room. Minutes will be in your packet in January, but the November 2023 Director's Report is in your packet, and I move that that be received and filed.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Broadband, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Brown.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Dow.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Coslin.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith.
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
Judicial Committee met November 20th. The minutes are in your package. I make motion they be received and filed.
Thanks.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Key.
Yes, the Rules Committee met November 20th prior to the last county commission meeting. I move that, I'm sorry, I move that to be filed.
Received and filed. Got a motion? I hear a second. I do. Any discussion on those? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban Type Facility Board met on Friday, December the 1st, 2023, at 9:00. The minutes are in your packet. Please receive and file.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Financial Report, Mr. Aaron Maynor.
First, I apologize for not making it to the Budget Committee meeting this evening. I had a little family emergency with a dog. Now, that may not sound like a big deal, but if something happens to that dog, I'm gonna be sleeping outside tonight. That was not appealing. Secondarily, I asked Diane before the meeting, you know, I don't know, I've known all these commissioners for years, some of them for several years, some of them just a few years. What can I give them for Christmas this year? And she said, if you would just get up there and shut up and sit down, that'd be all they want. So I really don't have a report unless you have questions for me.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.[1736.13][1736.13][laughter]
Any discussion? You got a question, Mr. May? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met December 7th here in the courthouse. Minutes are in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Thanks.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 23-12-2, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the, to make an appropriation from Capital Project Fund for various projects.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? See you none. Are you ready to vote? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Denton. It didn't show all mine. Commissioner Denton?
I understand there's, I understand about $800,000 for construction and lumped in all this, presentate, all this revolution, and ag extension building, new addition. Is that the $800,000? It just said building construction on...
Amendment.
It is, Commissioner Denton. They will take that building that's there, the Neo building, and extend it towards the convenience center, kind of a block square there, going toward, expanding it lengthwise instead of coming out, but that's what that is. Yes, sir?
Is there any...
Ag extension paid for the design part of it out of their budget, and then we have an estimate that that's what that would be, what the cost would be to do that extension. Other questions?
Got promotion, you pay for that?
No, no, no. This is just UT ag extension.
Just that?
Yeah. They rent that building from us and this has anything to do with the fair or not.
It's the office business.
Just the building, yes, sir. Any other comments or questions? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Thank you, Ms. Dadd. I didn't see it.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes, 1 abstinent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-3, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from General Fund to the County Clerk Reserve Fund.
Motion approved.
Any discussion on it? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 and 1, resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-4, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from General Fund to WEMA.
Motion approved.
Got a motion and second discussion now. A, my thing doesn't work here, so I'm going to miss somebody if they push, I think, because I asked her to push. Do what? I know, but it might not even work at all because I asked her to push just to, so I don't want to miss nobody, get in trouble halfway through this. So, if you could help me, A, appreciate it. CNN, no discussion. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes.
24 yes, 1 abstinent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-5, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from Highway Public Works Fund to the Road Commission.
Aye.
Got a motion and second. Now, any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes, 1 abstinent.
23 yes, 1 abstinent and 1 abstinent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-6, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget, and to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an additional appropriation into Sheriff's Department.
Motion approved.
Aye.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Clark? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes.
24 and 1, resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-7, accepting a grant from the state for training equipment for the Wilson County Sheriff's Department.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes.
24 and 1, resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-8, to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from General Fund to the Sheriff's Department.
Motion approved.
Discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes.
24 and 1, resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-9, accepting a grant from the state of Tennessee for Wilson County Archives.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? CNN, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 yes.
24 and 1, resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-10, approving a lease agreement for building inspectors.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Keat? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
23 yes.
23 yes, 1 no. Resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-11, approving a lease agreement for the Clerk and Master.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Screen went off. Commissioner Kurtz, did you miss my screen? Do what? You got it. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 yes, 1 no, 1 abstinent. Resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-12, to amend the budget appropriation resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education budget amendment 24-04.
Aye.
Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Help me out, put my screen off. It's the worst day of my life up here. Not really. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 and 1, resolution passes.
Resolution 23-12-13, amending Rule 46 of the Rules of Order.
Any discussion? Commissioner Kurtz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hit my button. I don't know if you can see it up there.
Neither one of my screens worked for whatever reason.
Yeah. And during the Rules Committee, there wasn't much discussion or much question about changing the rule. And it may not seem like it's that big a deal to change the rule, but effectively, the Judicial Committee recommends hiring of, or adding additional positions to begin with. It has to come through for all the departments that are listed, as well as the nomination for a Judicial Commissioner comes through the Judicial Committee's office and, or committee and sets a term. That nomination is brought to the floor. Currently, Human Resources is handling the hiring of Judicial Commissioners, but the process of coming to the committee to be nominated to the floor is the way that it's been done and needs to continue to happen. Or we could end up with situations that we've had in the past where people have nominated from the commission floor and not come through the committee. And that hadn't happened in recent times because of the rule of coming through to the Judicial Committee. But the, I think the largest thing is the extra vetting and setting a term at the committee level. And as we know, that's where all the, really, sausage is made. Am I correct, Mr. McFarland?
That's right, you're correct.
And so, if we take that away, then we would be looking at taking, looking at the Ag Center Director position away from the Ag Management Committee, the Ag Extension Office away from the Ag Extension Committee, the Finance Director away from the Finance Committee. You know, we could go on and on about changing the rules and doing away with personnel matters out of our committee. And I just think it's bad practice to start.
So, this rule to not, if I understand it right, when somebody is recommended to be a Judicial Commissioner, you used to go through the vetting practice of the committee, then on to the commission. This rule changes the committee process and brings it straight to the commission floor. So, if you vote yes for the rule change tonight, you're doing away with them going to the committee and coming straight here for your approval. It will take 17 to make that change. Commissioner Gentry?
It never says in the definition of the committee that that's the way it works, okay? It just says, and it lists all the offices that it pertains to, including the General Sessions, the Circuit Court, the Clerk and Master. And the only thing this does is takes the personnel issues out. It doesn't take anything out of it. Any other, anything that's added that costs money must have to come through the committee. Any money addition has to come through the committee. But we have offices that have certain people, number of people that are allowed in, say for the Clerk and Master and the other offices. And when they hire and fire there, they don't come through the committee. We don't, we do not interview the Judicial Commissioners in the committee. And I dare say, the one we appointed tonight, I've never met that young lady, and I guarantee none of my committee has met that lady. But it was in, she was interviewed by HR and the head of that office as far as personnel. Now, if they are not doing the job, there are other ways you can get rid of the people. You go to the Board of Judicial Conduct, and that board is at the state. And if they're inappropriately doing their job, issuing warrants or not issuing warrants based on the facts, that's where you handle that situation. But personnel matters have to do with showing up on time, hiring the person, training the person, has nothing to do with the job that they're doing. We still have at the commission level the ability to either elect or not elect or appoint or not appoint for the amount of time that we want to appoint these people based on HR and the director of the office. I fully support this change because I think we need, we've already had some people on this commission that have interfered with that office. Now, I dare say, have they interfered with the judge's office? No. The clerk and master's office? No. We don't, they don't work for us in the committee level. All we do is we make sure we do the budgets, and if they have personnel matters, they deal with it with HR. If they have matters concerning the job that they're doing in that job, it goes to the Board of Judicial Conduct. And that's where they are either ousted or not. And if they're ousted, it takes, you got to go to court to do it. And that's all I have to say. I support this, and I recommend everybody vote for this. So, we stay out of the business of that office because we're not in the business of any other judicial office. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones? Nope. Commissioner Breeze?
This was, it may not be the right language. I guess maybe we need to go back to the county attorney, but the reason for this was to make sure that Judicial Commissioners actually are voted on by the full body. So, we're following TCA. So, I'm going to read you a section of TCA 40-1-111, which is the TCA that is over Judicial Commissioners. So, Section A, 1A, says, "The chief legislative body of any county having a population of less than 200,000 or a population of no less than 276,000 nor more than 277,000 according to the 1970 federal census or any subsequent federal census may appoint, and the chief legislative body of any county having a population of over 700,000 according to the 1970 federal census or any subsequent federal census may initially appoint one or more Judicial Commissioners whose duty or duties shall include but not be limited to the following", which is a big list. But, point of this is that per TCA, it actually says that Judicial Commissioners are supposed to be voted on by this body. So, we wanted to ensure that we don't end up in a situation where we're violating TCA by stopping the possibility of an appointment at the committee level. So, that was the impetus behind this rule change. Now, again, I'll defer to the county attorney. Maybe we need to use different verbiage. But I don't think there's a problem necessarily giving a recommendation from the committee level. But I would question that we're violating TCA by not, by, if we stopped a Judicial Commissioner appointment at the committee level and don't let it come through for this, the full body to vote one way or the other.
Commissioner Glover?
I'm with Commissioner Kurtz. I believe we need to vote no on this. All the issues, all the trouble, the lawsuits, everything we've had over the last few years, there's so many issues, we don't need to take eyes away from the committee. We need to make sure that we're overseeing the committee as much as we can. So, I encourage everyone to vote no on this, just to, just to leave some guidance and some supervision.
I'm going to go to the county attorney first, and I'll come back to Commissioner McFarland and Commissioner Clark.
The state law, the state law has always been that this body elects a Judicial Commissioner, full time or part time. That's never changed, and this doesn't change it. Whether you vote for it or you vote against it, it still has to get, a nominee has to get 13 votes through this, through this commission. Now, I don't believe a committee can kill a recommendation. They can send it up with a negative recommendation that we don't recommend this person. But they can also send it up with a positive recommendation and everybody here voting against it. And then there's the wild card, and that is anybody can be nominated from the floor for this job. And if they get nominated and they get a vote and they get 13 that night, they got the job. That, this doesn't change that either. It can be done from the floor. And we have had nominations from the floor before, but not in several years. So, I hope I hadn't waded the water in it, but don't be confused, I probably have, Chris, but don't be confused. You will still vote on whoever, whether the committee recommends it, whether HR recommends it, or whether somebody sitting on that back row comes to the front there and says, I want to nominate Chris Dow for this position. His name goes into nomination.
Commissioner McFarland?
I thought I heard a moment ago, comment that be appointed by the committee. The committee can't appoint, can you?
Committee is never appointed.
Correct.
They've always been recommended by, and what this does, what this does takes away from the recommended part of it. You're taking this directly to the HR director, as I understand.
So, what happens? They go through the process of working in her office and HR and come up with a person, and normally that would go to the committee for an up or down recommendation to you guys, because you guys have the final vote. So, what this rule does is says, hey, we're not even going to bring that person to you for an up or down vote one way or another. As Mike said, they can't kill it. They can't keep the person from coming to you, but they can give you a positive or a negative recommendation. This rule change says, hey, we're not even going to bring them through that committee. We're going to go straight to you if you vote yes to take, to amend this rule. Does that make sense?
Mr. Lee?
Mr. Clark?
I would like to change.
To speak to what Lauren, Commissioner Breeze just said, I guess it's more of a question for Mike. She said she was concerned that possibly be in violation of TCA rules. With that wording, a judicial committee made up of elected commissioners, would that not satisfy the definition of a legislative body?
No. The legislative body is the entire commission. So, it doesn't matter whether you send it through one committee, five committees, or no committees, 13 votes have still got to come from this floor to elect somebody like you did tonight.
But it's still not going to be in violation, in your opinion, of that TCA law she...
I don't see how we're violating TCA unless we don't elect from the floor.
Right.
And that, that person, I don't know how they could take, take the oath of office if you don't elect.
Correct. Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I guess I did get confused. I don't read where the Judicial Committee is no longer going to recommend. It's just not going to, personnel matters, personnel matters is a big general statement. Recommending to be appointed isn't in itself not a personnel matter. They would exclude a recommendation. In that recommendation is one year, two years, four years, however. I mean, there's a lot more to it. For me, the way this reads, unless For me, the way this reads, unless I'm missing something, still gonna go to the judicial committee for recommendations. Am I wrong? Because I want to vote the right way, I, I mean, I, can somebody answer that? Because mayor's interpreting it one way, and I think, I don't read it that way, myself.
If we both know it's staying like it is, go to the committee, or then to the commission.
As I understand this, when it went through the rules committee, the intention was that recommendations for future judicial commissioners would not come out of the judicial committee in the future.
That's what this does.
That's what this does. That's what the intent was.
If we both just know, we do a convention, just like we do, go through the judicial committee, committee in the.
You can?
Yes.
The intent of the rule change was to take away personnel matters from going through the committee, which is a recommendation to hire a new judicial commissioner.
But it wasn't wrong, though, was it? So why would they say?
I can't answer that one, I wasn't a part of why I went to the rules committee, but, I mean, point taken.
It's a recommendation instead of personnel matter.
I would think so, yes. I got one more in the hopper before I come to you.
Commissioner Breeze?
I just want to clarify back to Commissioner Clark, that the intent, in, in my eyes, was just to ensure that we don't end up creating a roadblock at the committee level. So that was, again, probably poor wording on the rule choice, but that we can recommend, just like the county attorney explained, we can vote up or down, but that that person, regardless, comes to the full body for a decision. That it doesn't actually, that, that person's possibility of becoming a judicial commissioner, that road doesn't end at the committee level.
What's the purpose of changing?
So, well, like I said, that was, that was my intent, was that it was to clarify the fact that we needed to make sure that, following TCA, meaning that the entire body had to be able to have the ability to vote on judicial commissioners, that we didn't end up stopping that road at the committee level. Does that make sense?
Yes, but you don't, and as Mike.
But again, I don't necessarily write.
Yeah, you can't kill it. You can't kill it at the committee.
Exactly, and that's, again, that was, the point was clarification, so clarification's been provided.
Yes. Commissioner Gentry?
Okay, when I first started on this committee, we used to interview all the judicial commissioners at the committee level, okay? We used to do that. So we could evaluate to see if we would recommend them. We don't do that any longer. We hired a director who interviews people for the job. She coordinates with the HR, they advertise for the job, they come, and this young lady we appointed tonight, we, she has a procedure where she hires the person as a contingent, and she trains them. If they don't train well, she doesn't recommend them to come before the commission. It doesn't come before the committee, she's only brought the name to the committee, she didn't bring the person, we didn't interview the person, and all I'm saying is, the committee doesn't know who they are. So why are we recommending or not recommending someone? The only way we can do it is if we know the commissioners that are there and we're re-appointing them, some of the law enforcement people on the commission may know them, and they may not like working with them, or they may like working with them. And all I'm saying is, it's a conflict of interest if we have law enforcement on my committee, or even former law enforcement, that either recommend or don't recommend commissioners. So I think in order not to interfere with the office, we allow the director, whoever that director may be, to interview, coordinate with HR, and advertise the job, and then if she trains them for two months like she did, and they were on salary when they were trained, they were not commissioners, they were trained, and once she finished that training, or any time during the training, she could say, "It's not working out, I'm not gonna recommend you go to the full commission." The committee never interviewed the person, we never met the person, we had to go by the director's recommendation to us. And I'm saying, if we're gonna do it that way, then what committee, what can we do in the committee other than to say, "Well, we know this commissioner that's been working there for four years, and they didn't give me these warrants when I was a police officer, so I don't want them." And I think this takes away from the interference portion of that, and I think this is a much better op, way to operate. Now, if she comes to us and say, "This person is not gonna be working out," she wouldn't even bring it to us. She would only recommend someone that she's hired, trained, and they've met the standards in that office. Thank you.
Commissioner Hall? Got a question, call forward, I hear a second?
Say it.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, you got two and, two and a hop, three in the hopper, and then we'll go for the question. Commissioner Hall?
I just recommend that we continue to keep the committee the way it's set up right now. I don't believe we need to be stripping any oversight from the committee at this time.
Commissioner Glover?
I just thought, if we don't vote no, if we vote yes, we might as well put the judicial, the entire department under a judge or something like that, to have more oversight, if we're gonna go this direction. And I totally disagree with if you have a police officer on there, and they're not, they're not getting the correct service they should be getting, and you should take them away. I think that's totally incorrect, your way of thinking. And thirdly, do we have, do we have a director over judicial commit, over the judicial department right now?
Yes.
We have an acting director?
Yes.
I thought they were stripped of their power.
No.
Last one, Commissioner Kurtz?
The, Mr. Gentry brought, brought up a whole new thing, and I guess I didn't pay attention when Ms. Conjroni was here earlier. In the budget, I don't think we have a civilian trainee employee budgeted. We have part-time or full-time judicial commissioners. I don't know how we're hiring somebody outside the budget that's act, acting outside of a judicial commissioner. And the committee did, the judicial commissioner's office has always acted through, and this started with Commissioner Ash, through a handbook that the judicial committee formed, and part of that was naming a director and assistant, and then the director names an assistant. The committee voted to do away with that handbook. So honestly, to answer Commissioner Glover's question, I don't know how the commissioner, judicial commissioner's office is running right now, because there isn't a handbook other than the county personnel handbook that doesn't have a director's position in it, that I'm aware of, for judicial commissioners. So that leads itself to a whole nother can of worms that a rule change is opened up. As you all can tell, there are a lot of problems in this office, and if you don't believe me, just check the circuit court clerk's filings where we're in lawsuits over this office. So, what you would be doing is playing right into another lawsuit, that is probably eventual anyway.
So we're ready to vote, just being sure we're clear on the voting part here. You're voting to amend the rule or change the rule 46, and it simply states to recommend and inform the commission on any matters the judicial committee can, except personnel matters, and so that's where the part would come in, to where you don't make a recommendation to this committee to vote. That's the piece that you're taking out. If you vote yes. If you vote no, then you're leaving it just like it is today. It'll take seventeen of you to change the rule. And I'm ready for you to vote. Yes, if you want to change the rule, no if you don't, takes seventeen to change the rule. Please cast your vote. I can't see anything, so you have to tell me. Krista Marlowe? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
You got three yes, twenty-one no, one abstain.
Resolution fails.
On the next resolution, we need to go out of session to.
Got a motion to go out of session? Second?
Say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution, resolution 23-12-14 to reflect revenues received and not included in the original budget and to amend the budget appropriation resolution to make an additional appropriation into animal control.
Motion approved. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-four and one, resolution passes. There a motion to go back into session? Second? The second? All in favor, say aye. Any old business to come before the body? Any new business? Hang on one second. Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I just wanted to, if you didn't know, if you live in east part of the county, county got its first wholesale club, opened up Friday, called BJ's Wholesale Club. I got the pleasure of being led through there by my wife this evening, and it's very nice. Come see us. It's, it's down off of Adam Blunt.
Just say this to you, it's my honor to work with all of you and have the good discussion that we have, day in and day out here. I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and enjoy your family this season. One more motion.
Merry Christmas.
We are enjoying it.